All right, let's go ahead and call the first meeting of 2018 to order. Our prelude music this evening was provided by Noah Stevens. Noah, thank you so much. I'd like to start the meeting with an invocation by our own city manager, Mr. Aaron Adams, with a flag salute led by Councilman Comachero.
Great, would you please stand? Please bow your heads. Dearly Father, Lord, we just give you thanks for the freedoms and democracy that we enjoy. We pray for the people of Temecula, and we thank you for the blessings on this city. We pray for wisdom and discernment with the city council, with the city staff. We thank you for our residents and the community that we have the privilege of governing and leading, and we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Remain standing, place your hand over your heart, and let's honor our country with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, you can all be seated. Let's see. Madam City Clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Comachero?
Here.
Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember Nigara is absent. Councilmember Stewart? Mayor Ron?
Here. All right, just wanted to give a quick shout-out to Councilmember Nigara. I know, or Mayor Protem Nigara, I know he's not feeling well, he's got a bit of the flu, it sounds like, so we're going to continue the meeting, but I know he's probably watching the meeting right now. Mike? Hi, feel wetter. Sorry you're sick. We have three presentations tonight. First, we have our customary and ceremonial presentations to the incoming and outgoing mayors and TCSD presidents. So first, I would like to pass on to President Jeff Comachero an appreciation to your service as community services director and department president, citizens of Temecula, and you have so many years listed on this plaque, it's ridiculous, but thank you again for another wonderful year of service.[171.56][171.56](applause). And Mary Ann Edwards, in appreciation for your third term as mayor to the citizens of the city of Temecula, rounding out a wonderful 2017, present you with a plaque again for all your services, mayor, to this wonderful city.
Thank you.[194.23][194.23](applause). And so, along those lines, Mr. Mayor, I have your incoming mayor's gavel, and you know, when I hold it, it looks kind of normal, but when you hold it, it's going to look really small, so I thought we needed to get you a larger gavel.
(inaudible).[215.12][215.12](applause). We'll just get me a sledgehammer. All right, wonderful. All right, so, thank you, looking forward to a great year 2018. I'm glad such a huge crowd showed up today to commemorate the event, so thank you all for joining us. Let's see, next on the list, we have a presentation of certificate and appreciation for Susan Miyamoto, if you wouldn't mind coming down to the podium. All right, Susan, thank you.
Yeah, yell. Yeah, it's not on.
It's not on. All right, let's do this instead. Susan, every year you do such an amazing job working with our wonderful city. It's fun that you get to be here for my first meeting.
Yes.
Hi.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Susan Miyamoto, unselfishly giving her time and talents organizing, providing beautiful prelude music for city council meetings, recognizing how music and the arts bring culture and beauty to a community, Temecula is truly fortunate to have you continually mentoring and training our next generation of artists and musicians. With that, thank you so much for everything you do for our city, and if you have any words to say, I know, come on, Susan, we can do it. Just this one.
Well, I just want to thank the city for giving all these musicians the opportunity to give community service. They really enjoy doing it, and I think this city has the best prelude music in the area.[310.12][310.12](applause). Thank you.
Susan, as you leave, if I may, I have two questions for you. Do you have all the plants through all the years somewhere in your home, and are they still alive? We give you one every year, and it's very well-deserved. Thanks, Susan.
A few of them are alive.
Okay, and then, last but certainly not least for today, presentation of service pins to several of our folks. We have Mary Ann Edwards, Albert Blair, and John Taliseo, if you could join me down at the podium.
You too.
Yeah, everybody should, right? Right? Yeah, why not? Let's do it. John, I spelled your name wrong. That's okay. They did. They spelled John's name wrong. Oh, my God. I will pronounce it properly, though. John, how could you spell it wrong? Right? John Taliseo receiving the 20-year pin, 20 years of dedicated service to the city of Temecula. John, cannot thank you enough for all you've done for our city.
Wow.[379.91][379.91](applause).
Albert Blair, another 20-year service pin for amazing community and amazing volunteer and all the work that you've done over the last two decades. Thank you so much.[394.37][394.37](applause). Yes, and Mayor Mary Ann Edwards, only 15 years of service, but we decided to give you a pin anyway, so thank you so much.[408.81][408.81](applause). If you all want to say a few words, please join us. Yeah, come on, John.
Well, I really want to thank the council and the previous councils for keep appointing me to this position, because in effect, it's given me a front-yard seat to, in effect, the things that are happening in Temecula, and it's been in Old Town, and it's been really a great thing. And it was kind of neat when I came into Temecula 20 years ago that I could use this as a way to really get in touch and get in, join with the city, and so I appreciate it, so thank you.
Well, this is still a big deal, but I'm just here to tell you I'm about two or three meetings into my next 20.[462.02][462.02](laughing).
Perfect.[464.02][464.02](applause).
Thank you.[466.02][466.02](applause).
All right. Let's see, that ends our presentation proclamation. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
We do, Mr. Mayor. We have three public comments on non-agendized items and two public comments on a consent calendar item.
Okay, we'll go ahead and take all of those. I'll have to read this briefly. "Total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the city council on items that appear within this consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the city council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filed or filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to city council addressing public comments and the consent calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward, state your name for the record. For all public hearing or city council business, items on the agenda or requests to speak form may be filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing that item. Each speaker would be limited to five minutes." We have our first speaker, please.
The first speaker on a non-agendized item is Ms. Miller. Ms. Miller?
This is on a non-agendized item?
Good evening.
Good evening. I was just explaining to the children not to be intimidated by this resource waste of the building that underneath this floor beats the heart of Temecula and the chaperone and the past that the mountain lions made. Don't be intimidated. Speak from your heart to protect the land here. It took a miracle for humans to survive generations of volatile planet Earth's weather patterns and to live in harmony with the creation. Now that is impacted with every blade of dirt turned by an earth mover or D6 bulldozer or every forest that is removed for stick housing. These developers in coalition with city councils must stop their weather-changing projects and restore with recycled materials the buildings we have and walk with the least-impacting carbon and resource and water-draining actions that we can upon this planet because of the over-warming of the oceans from extracting petrochemicals for trivial car trips and superficial worldwide entertainment and holiday actions. Keep it local, ride the mass transit, stop manufacturing more jet planes, bring the troops home, or train them to rebuild other nations so people can stay in their homelands. We are melting the planet from our transportation, bulldozing, ripping open the Earth and releasing CO2 methane leaks from humans storing methane underground, from roaming the world for natural gas and then fracking the underground substrata. Whatever we are consuming in food, utilities, goods, we must cut it by half. You know, I spoke to the people at the Rose Bowl in Oklahoma. They are feeling the fracking earthquakes. Do you dare waste oil on building another place we don't need? And those people who said that we need more housing in Temecula, I almost bought that. I almost felt bad about it in Old Town. And then I looked across the way where you can walk or take a bus, or I looked down here, and there's plenty of housing for Old Town. Our overheating is rising and being trapped by greenhouse gases and sent back to the Earth where it has melted the glaciers, the icebergs, and filled the seas with fresh water that is lighter than seawater and diluted the saltwater affecting the krill. And then the pollock and herring that the polar bears use for resources are not there, and they are getting thin and starving. And the upper atmospheres, so that the result of global warming will be weathered too cold to be concerned.
Ms. Miller, you're going to have to wrap up. Your time is up, if you could just conclude.
Well, Jehovah will raise those who accepted the behavior of not ignoring their local government and other authorities that are squandering the planet's resources.
The next speaker on non-agendized items is Dr. Murray Galbreth.
Thanks for having the opportunity to speak here.
Evening.
These two. I just want to speak about a potentially really dangerous situation that exists around Temecula Valley High School. I live in the homes just on the north side of Rancho Vista, and I got to pull out onto Rancho Vista. I go back to my office usually around 2:30 in the afternoon. That's all red curb area as it comes in off of Rancho Vista, and the entire section from the parking lot all the way down to Margarita is all red curb. There's people lined up there waiting for their kids. There's people that come into our neighborhood and park there to wait for their kids. There's no crosswalk at that intersection there, and I've lived there since 80, 88, and we haven't, we never had that problem when there was, like, when Officer Bailey was there directing traffic. But I watched a girl crossing the street, coming from the school into the neighborhood, just about get hit by a pickup truck. She was trying to catch up, it looked like she was trying to catch up to a group of about five or six students that were ahead of her, and that person in the pickup truck was waiting to turn into our neighborhood to pick someone up, and when those kids had gone, he was looking into the neighborhood, and this other girl ran out, and she had to jump sideways and put her hand on the hood of the truck and jump, and she screamed, and then he started yelling at her. It's just a really, really dangerous situation there, that I spoke to the resource officer, Deputy Kennedy, in the school, and he said he really can't do anything because red curbs aren't enforced. And I don't know if that was the problem, but to me, it seems like it would be a lot easier for kids to walk downhill, cross one intersection at Margarita, and go to the sports parks and get picked up there. We also have lots of kids coming up to the stores at the corner of Margarita and Pava where my office is, and that's probably the smallest parking lot in Temecula to get in and out of, but they got to walk up and cross two intersections there. And I've always had one of my staff and a patient hit by a mom picking up a high-school-age kid in a big lifted truck that kind of roared through the parking lot. To me, it just doesn't make any sense to have that going on. Deputy Kennedy said, are the kids doing anything up there that we need to look at or that, you know, that they shouldn't be doing? And I said, no. So he says, until they are, we really can't do anything. So I just wanted to address this to the council before somebody gets hurt, and that's really my only reason for being there. I've got, I've got three slides that I wanted to show, but if you want, I can email them to, and you can take a look at it if you don't already know what's going on there.
Yeah, please do email. I, Mary Ann, I think you had a comment.
Yeah, I was working on the parking issue up in your neighborhood, I think it was about six weeks ago, and spoke to the police chief, so I have new, red curbs are enforced, and so, you know, we can have our motor officers out there to monitor the situation.
Right. Getting in and out of there doesn't bother me at all. It takes me like another minute and a half, but it's four lanes of traffic going like this, and kids crossing, and cars coming out of the parking lot that, like, everybody's anxious to get out of school, it's pretty dangerous.
Thank you, and Mr. City Manager, if we could follow up on that and maybe report back to, if we have your contact information, report back to, and if you could leave any of the photos with the city clerk there.
I have your contact information, yeah, I'll follow up.
Yeah. The next speaker on non-agendized items is Jordan Beck.
Mr. Beck, good evening.
Thank you, City Council. My name is Jordan Beck. I am the executive director of The Barn Stage Company. If you haven't heard of us, we've been around for the last couple of years. In fact, back in May of 2012, my producing partner and I, J. Scott Lapp, who is a, he works professionally on Broadway as a director all over internationally, we started Cabaret at the Merc, which is a monthly Broadway cabaret series that takes place on the last Sunday of every month, and we've brought in people like Stephen Schwartz, who wrote Wicked and Godspell. He came and did a show with us at the theater. And we, two years ago, started The Barn Stage Company, and we are, it's our goal to bring professional theater to Temecula, and that Temecula can have its own resident professional theater company. I'm inviting you all, not just the, not just the council members, and Mike Nigara, I hope you feel better, and when you do feel better, come out to see our upcoming production of Little Women. So I'm going to put the, makes sense? I don't know if you can zoom in on that, but I'll just go over the details real quick. This is Little Women, the Broadway musical. We start performances this Thursday. Jeremy, J. Scott Lapp, unfortunately, he wished he could be here tonight, but he's over at the theater right now teching the show, and he's directing the show as well. And then he leaves for Denmark to work on The Prince of Egypt musical, which he just worked up, worked on at Palo Alto. So we really believe that Temecula, along with the wine country, tourist destination city, has a place and the potential to have a resident professional theater company. Just statistics, 70% of the Barn Stage Company patrons and our donors are all coming from San Diego and LA. They're coming to Temecula, staying in Temecula, to see Barn Stage Company shows, because we, we believe, you know, we pay our, all of our actors professionally, we do use union contracts when we can, and we use live professional musicians down in the pit, but it's really, it's growing, it's getting more and more difficult for us to survive here in Temecula without the community support, and so I'm inviting you once again to come out and check this out. We also have the Secret Garden in Concert coming up in March on Rod Run Weekend. These concert presentations, we started back in March of 2000, it would have been March of 2016 was our first one. We did Rodgers and Hammerstein's Carousel in Concert with a 32-piece orchestra. We teamed up with the Temecula Valley Symphony, and it's a beautiful presentation. For Secret Garden in Concert, our Mary Lennox was Matilda on Broadway. We're bringing quality performers here, and it's unfortunate, sometimes I go out and I ask people, and just down, you know, down the way on Old Town or in the wine country, they don't know that there's a theater in Temecula, let alone a professional theater company.
You're back here overtime. I appreciate the, appreciate the info. Any parting words?
No, come and see Little Women, and all of you, come and support live theater.
All right, thank you so much.
Of course.
The next two public comments are on agenda item number six on the consent calendar. The first speaker is Mary Lou Rossick.
Honorable members of the city council, I guess I'm taking advantage of my last public chance to speak on this. I understand that the approval of the Altair project this evening is only a formality. However, I would like to address a few issues. My first concern is the wildlife corridor. Consultation with wildlife agencies should occur to determine exactly where on the south parcel that the dirt be stockpiled to be least disruptive to wildlife. Additionally, if volunteer groups remove trash from the 15 freeway underpass and its approaches, I expect the city to support this effort. If homeless are displaced, I want the city to work with the social services to try and get these people into housing and treatment. Secondly, the city should install suitable lock gates and fencing where needed to deny easy access. This would help eliminate the merry-go-round that we are on now of having squatters return as soon as the area is cleaned up. When Caltrans and a city want to eliminate graffiti on their freeway overpasses, they put up fencing. How can you expect wildlife to use the underpass when it is occupied by squatters with their accompanying trash, illegal campfires, lights, dogs? It seems to me that the city of Temecula has an obligation to thwart access to the undercrossing, otherwise it is just paying lip service to the idea of wanting a wildlife corridor. The funding is available, a minimum of $200,000 is guaranteed to be paid to the city before the first building permit is issued. I would also like to take this time to thank Mayor Ron for emphasizing the point that pure open space has value. The testament to that fact is the value that people place on our own mountains. When Temeculans talk about the view, they aren't talking about buildings, and of course, don't forget the number of locals who enjoy the meadow of Temecula's own meadow view development. Finally, I was disturbed that the council members were so opposed to extending the hearing on the final EIR by even one month. Their implication was that environmental groups and conservation agencies were the reason why it took four and a half years to get to the final EIR. My understanding is that prior to the release of the draft EIR, environmental groups and agencies were allowed marginal input at best. I lay the blame at the feet of the city of Temecula and Altair developers as to why it took three years for the draft EIR to be released. The draft EIR was released in June 2016 and the final EIR in December 2017. I think a year and a half is a reasonable amount of time to go from draft to final. Thank you so much, as ever.
Thank you.
Our last speaker is also on the consent calendar for this item, Ms. Miller.
And once again, we're asking for a continuum because of this inclement weather, and why can't you give it to the citizens? So that I can meet and talk to more people. And you haven't told us how many emails and how many phone calls that you have about this. Even Elsinore will tell you that. We had 29 phone calls, letters. Come on. Who on staff should report this? Many people thought the 270 acres were part of the Preserve Corridor. They run up to me downtown and say this. That protected the mountain lion habitat that occurred 10 years ago when the ridge of the Santa Ana Mountains were set aside and riverside conservation programs. People want to know how ambient was able to buy property that is designated habitat conservation, and that means they can't develop this. The big cats have been here since before humans existed, and several species have gone extinct. We don't want the ones here, too. Do you know what that's going to cause? Rodents, rats, up and down your downtown. Then you'll poison them. Then they're going to get your pets, the poison. Do you think that's a responsible city council? Many other people have noted that this proposal is in a high-fire area with dry brush and the drought that we are experiencing now. This rain blew away the dust, however, winds will bring back dry leaves. It also flooded downstream, or that's upstream north of here in Marietta, and two cars slid into the floods, just like they always have. No matter how far down you dig your Marietta Creek, this place is going to flood because you keep putting concrete everywhere, and if you do a tiered project like that, the erosion is going to fall down this way and be even a stronger current headed toward Marietta. How can you say that there is mitigatable or no impact on the Arroyo Chub, California redletic frog, western pond turtle at the junction of Marietta Coal and Pachanga Creeks when the runoff will be filled with hazardous materials from cars leaking, household chemicals on the lawns, and landscaping from the Altair construction? This flooding will actually bring them into existence and create habitat for endangered species to be observed. This will cause construction to be halted and shouldn't be started because animals will appear. These rains will bless us. Nature will bring the rains, the vernal pools and string beds will fill with endangered species. There is too much housing, too much commercial building already on both sides of Marietta Creek, and these chamber of commerce people and developers are just lining the pockets at the expense of the air quality, peace and quiet, water quantity, which is already greatly downsized, which brings us to this western bypass, needs to be stopped immediately because of the already noise levels, and it's hardly more than the usual.
I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up, please.
Why, that's not five minutes. Where's my five minutes? I have two more minutes. All right, the developers have had their turns, they have tied up the traffic.
I'm sorry, Ms. Miller.
Polluted the, the air, drained people's health.
You're limited to three minutes on consent items, so if you could wrap up, I'd appreciate it.
What's that? It's three minutes on consent?
Three minutes on consent items.
Well, then, I need to speak on it again. Look at them standing. These people are standing against you, and they will not be voting for you. You can vote for that man there, Stewart. The rest of them, they're gone. They better pack up their offices.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes public comments on consent calendar as well. We have no further public comments.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any city council reports? No, seeing no one in the queue. I have a handful of items that we should probably chat about really quickly. One of those is toward the end of last year, the city held a regional workshop on the marijuana or cannabis issue, and it's one of those items that we continue to deal with and struggle with. I'm sure everybody has seen most recently that the federal government has, once again, taken a position, rolling back the coal memo and other potential protections afforded to those states that chose to legalize both medical and recreational or adult-use cannabis. The city is still looking into this, we're still dealing with the, with the issue, and we'll be providing updates as they, as they come through, and we expect to- All right, the developers have had their turns, they have tied up the traffic—
I'm sorry, Ms. Miller.
—polluted the—
You're limited to three minutes on consent items, so if you could wrap up, I'd appreciate it.
What's that? It's three minutes on consent?
Three minutes on consent items.
Well then, I need to speak on it again. Look at them standing. These people are standing against you, and they will not be voting for you. You can vote for that man there, Stewart. The rest of them, they're gone. They better pack up their offices.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes public comments on Consent Calendar as well. We have no further public comments.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any City Council reports? No, seeing no one in the queue. I have a handful of items that we should probably chat about really quickly. One of those is toward the end of last year, the city held a regional workshop on the marijuana or cannabis issue. And it's one of those items that we continue to deal with and struggle with. I'm sure everybody has seen most recently that the federal government has, once again, taken a position, rolling back the coal memo and other potential protections afforded to those states that chose to legalize both medical and recreational or adult-use cannabis. The city is still looking into this. We're still dealing with the issue, and we'll be providing updates as they come through. And we expect to have more information over the next few weeks. This coming Thursday next week, I'll be in Sacramento again. I serve as an advisory member to the Bureau of Cannabis Control in Sacramento. There's a lot on our agenda. We're going to start meeting monthly for the first part of this year, so I'll be reporting back to folks here. Just as a special note, we're the only local government jurisdiction represented out of the 22-member commission, so it puts us in a unique place to sort of carry forward the local government and local control issue to the state of California. So with that, more to come as we start to deal with that issue. Second on the list here, we've got a citizen reporting app that we'd like to show you a quick video on if we could. I didn't realize I was in that video. What was I doing? I looked really thoughtful and pensive.
You were reading.
Smile more.
It's a free app, too, I might add.
This is a free app. It's going to be a wonderful new way for our residents to connect with the city. You know, definitely download it, and it provides you with an opportunity to help connect your information and concerns directly to the city. And looking forward to its rollout, and I think it's going to be a wonderful new tool to help us stay on top of all sorts of issues. So definitely looking forward to seeing that used, and I'm sure that we'll report back as it's rolled out as to, you know, what kind of usage it has and what kind of statistics we're getting out of it. So look forward to that wonderful tool. Last, I just wanted to have, I think I have a slide on this. Real quickly, we had a ribbon cutting for Station 95 in Aurora Paw. This is the fifth station in our city. First one opened up in, well, at least first official station opened up in 1947. And over the years, we've grown just a little bit, and we're very happy to open up Station 95 on Saturday, a wonderful community turnout. Could not thank our folks at Cal Fire and our police as well for showing up and being a part of such a great community event. So look forward to improved response times and a great opportunity to, again, bring sort of measure-S funds to bear on public safety issues in our city. Thank you. Okay, no other reports seen. We are now moving on to the Consent Calendar. All matters listed under Consent Calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the City Council request specific items be removed from the Consent Calendar for separate action. Item number one, wave reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Item number two, approve the action minutes of December 12, 2017. Number three, approve the list of demands. Number four, approve the City Treasurer's Report as of November 30, 2017. Number five, approve financial statements for the first quarter ended September 30, 2017. Number six, adopt ordinance number 18-01 approving the Altair Specific Plan Project, and adopt ordinance number 18-02 approving the Development Agreement with Ambient Communities, planning application numbers PA 14-0158, PH 14-0159, PA 14-0160, and PA 14-0161. This is the second reading. Number seven, adopt ordinance 18-03 reauthorizing and readopting the city's public, educational, and governmental access support fee for cable television franchises. This is the second reading. Number eight, approve annual legislative platform for calendar year 2018. Number nine, approve annual boards and commissions handbook for calendar year 2018. Number 10, approve annual citywide records retention schedule and records destruction for calendar year 2018. Number 11, consent of City Council to the sale of Aurora Paw Valley Restorations interest in the Aurora Paw Ranch Development Agreement to Woodside Homes. Number 12, approve a cooperative agreement with Temecula Valley Genealogical Society in support of facility use. Number 13, approve the First Amendment to the agreement with Gary Austin Casson for the purchase of additional artwork for the Fallen Heroes Memorial Project. Number 14, approve an additional appropriation and award, a construction contract to Hillcrest Contracting for the Temecula Park and Ride, PW 06-19. And finally, number 15, accept improvements and file the notice of completion for the citywide concrete repairs fiscal year 2016 through 17, PW 16-04.
Move approval of the Consent Calendar.
Second.
I want to be consistent with my vote last week, so on number six, just, I want to be recorded as a no, but everything else I'm good with.
Okay. I have a motion from Mr. Comacher, a second from Ms. Edwards. Okay, and that, the balance of the items passed 4-0 with Mr. Nigard absent and the noted no vote from Mr. Stewart on item number six. Okay, so now we'll just adjourn the City Council meeting to the meeting of the Temecula Community Services District.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to call this meeting of the Temecula Community Services District to order. Madam Clerk, let's take the roll as we ring in the new year.
Director Edwards?
Here.
Director Nigard is absent. Director Ron?
I am here, still.
Director Stewart?
Here.
President Comacher?
Here. Do we have any public comments?
We do not have any public comments.
Thank you. We'll dispense with the reading then. We have three items on Consent Calendar. Item 16, approve the action minutes of December 12, 2017. Item 17, approve financial statements for the first quarter ended September 30, 2017. And item 18, approve a cooperative agreement with Temecula Grape Stompers Square Dance Club in support of facilities use.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Let's cast your votes. That motion does carry 4-0 with Mr. Nigard absent. Do we have a director's report?
Yes, we do, Mr. President.
Of course, we do.
Wouldn't want to let you down. 2017, of course, was a banner year, and thanks to the support of the community departments and City Council, we certainly are expecting a bigger and better 2018. A couple of upcoming items to touch on. On Saturday, January 20th, and Sunday, the 21st, Penny Pickles Workshop will host a special event called the Frankenstein Life Extravaganza. Now, LIFE stands for Laboratory for Innovation and Fantastical Exploration. Come on out and celebrate the 200th anniversary of Mary Shelley's masterpiece with tons of hands-on and creative fun. And for seniors, if you need help with a computer or smartphone that you got for Christmas, drop by the Mary Phillips Senior Center on Saturday, January 20th, from 12 to 2:00 PM for this month's intergenerational tech program, which is spearheaded by our Youth Advisory Council. Here, teens will provide assistance and guidance on your tech needs in a fun and supportive environment, so contact the Senior Center for additional information. And finally, at the Old Town Temecula Community Theater, as Jordan alluded to, the return to two classics, Little Women from January 11th through the 21st, and The Fiddler on the Roof, the 25th through the 27th. Visit our website for additional information, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Director Hawkins. Mr. Adams, do you have a general manager's report tonight?
Mr. President, just a simple thanks to all the folks in the Community Services Department for another incredible year with the holidays and all the events that occurred between November and December, and just acknowledging them and what they do day in, day out, but it really was another amazing holiday, and all the supporting operating departments that do support the TCSD. We thank everyone for a great year.
You're here. Okay, do we have any board member reports tonight? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn to the next meeting of January 23rd.
Move adjournment.
We have a motion and a second. Any objection?
Nope.
Seeing none, we'll stand adjourned.
Okay, I am now going to convene the successor agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency Meeting. Madam Clerk, note that all directors are present except for Mr. Nigard this evening. Do we have any public comments? We do not, seeing no public comments. We are now moving on to the Consent Calendar. All matters listed under Consent Calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the successor agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency request specific items be removed from the Consent Calendar for separate action. Item number 19, approve financial statements for the first quarter ended September 30, 2017.
Move 19?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. And—
Oop.
Mary Ann.
My finger is broken.
All right, and now that Mary Ann's rung in, it looks like we have a four-I votes with Mr. Nigard absent. Do we have an executive director's report?
Nothing tonight.
Seeing none. Do we have any board of directors reports this evening? None. Okay, so we will adjourn to January 23rd for close session, next session commencing at 7:00 PM. Okay, moving on, we are now back on to council business. This is the first item for the new year. Can we get a staff report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The item I'll be presenting is a proposed city tree care and preservation ordinance. Some background information on our current tree care standards, those are based on a policy that was adopted by the city in 1998. That is only a policy of the city at this time. The municipal code of the city includes a heritage tree ordinance that was adopted in 2005, and that ordinance protects heritage trees of certain species and heritage trees at certain locations, but doesn't cover all the city's trees. It does require a permit for cutting, removal, or replacement of any of the heritage trees. However, it only addresses the heritage trees and not other trees in the city. One of the reasons for bringing this ordinance to you is a program that was brought to us by the Temecula Valley Women's Club, and we'd like to thank them for their involvement in this program. That's what's known as the Tree City USA Program. It's a program that's administered by the Arbor Day Foundation. There are four requirements in order to qualify for the Tree City USA designation. One of those is for a city to enact a tree care ordinance, which we are presenting to you this evening. A second is to designate a person, department, or board that is responsible for the care of all trees throughout the city. The third requirement is to spend at least $2 per capita on tree care, and we currently meet that requirement here in Temecula. And the fourth requirement is to pass and recite an official Arbor Day proclamation, and I'll discuss that just a little bit further in the presentation. So the tree care ordinance that we have before you this evening is to codify our tree care standards and procedures that are found in our current tree policy manual. This will apply to all trees throughout the city and not only those designated as heritage trees. What is defined as a city tree is any tree within the city's right-of-way or on any city property, so covers a lot of trees in addition to those that are designated as the heritage trees. The ordinance makes it unlawful for any person to injure, cut, damage, prune, or remove any city tree without being expressly authorized. And any person performing tree care on city trees must abide by certain standards which is outlined in the ordinance before you. So again, the ordinance will satisfy that first criteria of the Tree City USA program. The second criteria designates the Public Works Director, or his or her designee is the person authorized to enforce this ordinance. And again, we already spend over $2 per capita on our tree care, so we meet that criteria for the Tree City USA designation. And the fourth criteria is to adopt a proclamation for National Arbor Day, which is this April 27th of 2018, and we'll bring that proclamation to you as we approach that date. And again, we'd like to thank the Temecula Valley Women's Club for their participation in this process. That concludes the staff report, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
I got a question. So explain to me what a heritage tree is.
It's defined as a tree of a certain species, and those species are listed in the current municipal code. I believe that includes the certain oak species, certain sycamore species, and then there are certain areas where those trees are located that are specified in the current section of the code, but that doesn't cover the entire city.
Okay, now explain to me the right-of-way. So how far from the road does a tree have to be in the right-of-way?
So the city's right-of-way typically is basically 10 feet behind the curb, so any tree that's located within that 10-foot parkway is within the city's right-of-way, and those trees are considered city trees. And then any other tree on city-owned property.
So behind the curb, you mean, so the sidewalk, the curb, the sidewalk, and then, so 10 feet from that curb is a city tree?
Correct.
Okay. That's it?
All right, any other questions? Okay, just on, as a side, I appreciate the folks coming forward with this concept. I'm glad to see that it was something for us as a city to be proud of, but also very proud to see that we're basically already doing everything that we need to do to be a Tree City USA, so in my mind, this is a fairly easy process. I'll take a motion.
I'll move it, but I do have a comment, Mr. Comacher. First, for those who remember Ron Roberts, who's, he's ill these days unfortunately, but back in 2005, he was very concerned that we were losing some of the beautiful oak trees, specifically the oaks. I mean, there were some other species involved, but, and so he brought forth the heritage ordinance, and I'm sure he would be very proud of what we're doing tonight. So with that, I heartily move the item.
If I may add also, once we satisfy all these criteria, we'll be able to actually submit that application for the Tree City USA designation, and we'll be able to put signs up that designate our city with that award.
And I second.
All right, motion and a second.
And I'll need to read the title. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Temecula, adding a new chapter 8.49, City Tree Care and Preservation, to titillate health and safety of the Temecula Municipal Code.
Okay, and that passes 4 to 0 with Mr. Nigard out sick. All right. Item number 21, adopt resolution to support move I-15 through Temecula Valley. Pat, can we have a staff report?
Actually, we're going to have Betsy Lowery—
Oh, Betsy, oh, all right, Betsy. Let's hear it.
You bet. Good evening, Mayor and City Council, I'm Betsy Lowery, Senior Management Analyst for the City Manager's Office. On September 5th, the City Council appointed Mayor Matt Ron and Mayor Pro Tem Mike Nigard to initiate a conversation with our local jurisdictions and subsequently include regional transportation partners and federal, state, and county officials throughout 2018 in a regional task force setting to address the daily interstate traffic congestion between the I-15, 215 junction and the San Diego County border. Thereafter, the cities of Temecula, Marietta, Menifee, Lake Elsinore, and the Pachanga, Wildamar, and the Pachanga Tribe convened at City Hall on November 30th. The outcome was unanimous by all jurisdictions during that meeting that this daily traffic is not a Temecula-only issue, that residents, businesses, communities travel through Temecula Valley mostly on their way to San Diego for employment and are significantly delayed on Interstate 15, in the morning going to work and in the afternoon coming back. An example of this is on this slide showing the afternoon commute northbound, and nearly no one is exiting Temecula Parkway. They are just trying to get through Temecula. The task force will take a close look at Caltrans' daily traffic counts, but this segment of Interstate 15 between the I-15, 215 junction and San Diego County border is part of, is documented, is part of the worst-ranked freeway— is documented as part of the worst-ranked freeway segments in the United States by InRex research in terms of traffic and economic cost of congestion, and also other publications. Marietta, Temecula, Menifee are among the city's worst commutes in America, published recently by MSM. It's important to recognize Interstate 15 is not, is not a city jurisdiction, it is a state and federal highway responsibility, but this segment of our I-15 is not on their radar yet. The first step of the task force would be to get this project on a regional transportation plan with our CTC, the project being to pave the median area of the freeway to add more lanes. On February 1st, the regional, the region will reconvene to structure the task force titled Move Temecula Through, I'm sorry, Move I-15 Through Temecula Valley to work as a collective voice and include Caltrans, RCTC, and other transportation partners, as well as federal, state, and county officials. Staff's recommendation recommends that the council adopt the resolution in support of move I-15 through Temecula Valley to improve the health, safety, and quality of life and economic needs of the citizenry of Southwest Riverside County. As part of the language, the resolution includes the city council would also be reappointing Mayor and city's RCTC Commissioner to the task force. I'm here if you have any questions.
Do I have any, no questions? Yeah, I think we all know what the issue is, and I think we all know what needs to be done, so looking forward to seeing this move forward. Do we, nothing else?
Do we see even far, though, is it?
We need a motion.
Oh, yeah. Second.
Okay, so, Mr. Comacher makes a motion, Mary Ann Edwards with the second. Please cast your votes.
Oops, I pushed your button, sorry.
Okay, and that passes 4-0 with Mr. Nigar absent. Okay, and then item number 22, selection of 2018 city council committees. We've asked to move this to the first meeting in February since Mr. Nigar is absent today, and really, it's important for all the council members to be here so that they can all sort of participate in this, and we'd hate to have a, you know, a decision on subcommittees and a lot of the important actions that the council does without having Mr. Nigar's imprimatur on the discussions.
His what?
His imprimatur, sir. On commission reports, do we have any commission reports today? Starting with, let's start with Mr. Sullivan.
I just want to commend you. You did a wonderful job on reading my report on the fire station. I would add, just in case, I don't recall if you mentioned it, but the funding for staffing came from Measure S.
Thank you, sir.
Excellent.
We got the wrong name tag up there by Mr. Telesio.
Tekekio.
Tekekio, yes, apparently. It says Tekekio.
No, thank you.
Nothing today. Mr. Schwenk.
Good evening, Mayor Ron. I just have a quick video that I'd like to show everyone really quick. Jonathan?
Good morning. Welcome to Skyview Park. Man, what an amazing view. This is one of the newest parks dedicated by the city of Temecula just a couple of weeks ago. My name's Jeff Lawrence, and I've actually worked for the Community Services Department since 1994. It's been an amazing ride, and I've seen a lot of great things put on by our Community Services Department, and we've got a lot going on today, so much, though, that we thought it would be a great idea to introduce a new TV series called T C S D TV. I'm gonna be your host. Along the ride, we're gonna recap special events, give you an idea of what amazing programs we put on, new facilities that we open, so stay tuned, and I hope you enjoy the ride.
So that video goes on to highlight quite a bit of what we've, what we do here at the city, and it's, we're just proud of it as a commission and proud of the department to put this together. Jeff Lawrence is pretty much a natural behind the camera, so kudos to Jeff and Mike Maury for getting that together, and Vea for the direction on it. Just a good resource for the community. They can see that on YouTube, it's posted to Facebook, and through all of the various social media, so encourage everyone to go check it out. New episode airing tomorrow.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. City managers' report.
Nothing further tonight, Mr. Mayor.
You sure?
I'm pretty sure.
All right, Mr. City Attorney.
We had a closed session tonight, but we have no reportable actions from the closed session.
Sure about that, too. All right, well, that concludes our meeting for tonight, and we will adjourn this meeting to January 23rd.
Mr. Mayor, if we could, I would like to request that we adjourn this meeting in memory of Paul Bandong, who is a true friend to this city and really the cities of Southwest Riverside County as a partner in the valley news. He passed away suddenly over the weekend, and it was quite a shock, and so I would like to remember Paul in our adjournment.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
And so I move that we adjourn in the memory of Paul Bandong, friend to all cities.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. See you next time.
Right, good job, Mr. Mayor.